If you didn't hear everyone. In the right of all the public safety. Public safety meeting, meeting to order is. Five thirty two. President is myself, Franco, the other individuals present. I'm Andrew Burden. On you hot. The resource. You all three are from. First order of business is communications. Evidence communications. Okay, some modifications.
And then we the it's and it even set out that letter from the several from fire officers. Let's say didn't say any support, the formula that.
How would we do that?
Um, you just tell. These were used that this. Yeah, that is. Record.
Happies, yeah, okay, you have more to pass around. Do I have that? That was from communication. Any communication. First order of business.
Well, wait, sorry, I did have communication for the fire boxes. They they address it.
It's a free form.
Was um. Now on a bridge. Um, removing fire boxes. Um, once again.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yes, and um. They sent an email to us and. We decided to have a plan for it and not.
But I've read on your response.
You're in a positive group of part. News for our system. It is a full technology photograph system that we're unable to get parts for any longer. It's not a decision that anyone wanted to make. I have a call. The manufacturer not supporting. That technology. Having issues with nails. Or respond within. Personally. There is other systems, but. But we can really. See how well they work or not. So. Great cold of a lot of stuff. Somebody's had that and moved that. Over years ago and. We're one of the few areas left having control of that box. The rock there down thirty years ago. East line just took their down about five years ago. The one is. Thirty thirty five years ago. Really been the last people holding on by. We are working with the other. All right, and any of the parts that were taken down that are salvageable. And give give them, but again, their systems are thirty forty boxes, ours are. Let's see.
Uh, next order of minutes. Minutes for the package.
Motion.
Okay, business next order. Of. For. So. Kind of have open dialogue at the end of the day, there's two parts. Both free parts, main parts, policy itself, which I mentioned, where you and your staff. So I'm much more elaborate than that. The other part is going to be so spreadsheet. You want to start from the policy?
Sure. I make from. Um, yeah, and the ultimate goal is to have a policy with. Initial spreadsheet with the formula with the other by chief Driscoll that you then tweaked into. A really well, easily readable format and then um. The goal is to make this so automatically each year of the budget, we start using this formula for five. Pilot dollars, the budget for also don't change it, but that is a starting point. So we always have that as a static. Um, first part is just the purpose, which I basically just said. Little bit of background on the which we talked about the way pilot dollars work. Going to definitions that are used in here moving on. Going to fire pilot just first and the second page. It talks more, it's a little bit. Basically, a few more definitions going into the priorities, priority one, and this comes from. You Driscoll corporate incorporating all these notes as to how the funding work. So with fifty percent of the pilot dollars received by the town, the state of the town, fifty percent will go towards. I mean. Our district's party one is mutual aid recognition that our districts that provide fire protection to state properties. Well, as eating others, other districts would. In a small two thousand, still two thousand dollars, I believe. Two thousand dollars type in or out of that. Party two fifty percent assessed value of ones from the balance after party one have been distributed equally. And this should actually basically there's a spreadsheet they have. They can make the copies that are embedded in policy. But these all relate to that fifty percent equalized assessed value. Friends from the balance after party one have been distributed are equally fifty cents assessed value from the town. Basically, the rest of the remaining value. Goes to the our departments. And this goes to the orange of the area percent or percent of loss. Actually, I'm wondering if, and do you want to go through the actual formulas?
Yeah, so the the prior two is a fifty percent of the value that was to me that the buildings. Get a higher value than the school works. Um, then the area percent or hundred percent loss was. Part of the goal was to make everyone be whole, but if. On a grid was to be old, it was quite out the entire amount. So if. If the area percent was area percent of. Eight home properties that fall within the fire. However, if that number is what they put the district should have gotten, you may hold and stop at that whole spot. Those ones remain in both that the departments that have the bigger loss have the opportunity. But basically, no one can profit. Off of this, only be made whole. But everyone that does not include the thousand dollar. Um, style or that that like. Lack of better terms, free money. But after when you start breaking down your tax loss, you will make you won't make more than your act. Um. Prior four was. Really so important in the time of drought. That the monies that were left over after fire retreat. Were given to rotten fire office association for that benefit, all of the rotten colored tape. Um, where police and ambulances would also need by. And kind of. For mutually. Um, hopefully to also work with. Any center that we've been talking about. They will finalize shortly. Uh, and then the last part was any money that's left over is to make a whole gap so for the district. That haven't been pulled is equally big, whatever balances left up, that there's three districts that are left and the money that's left over. Broken up three ways. It works on a percentage base. Where if there's less money that goes in, everyone gets penalized the same way. No one that did. Um, there are, there's one district that's right at that borderline of being made whole. That would have to be watched. I don't foresee on a grid or see Brown ever being made whole. But. At least it helps the the district aren't being hurt at that.
And just to note, the value of the state owned properties put together by the assessor, she indicated, wanted to make sure that that's not an issue. Do that here. It's just a little bit of work, but. For her. Uh, the policy is the town manager shall use enclosed formulas using the best data available because as we know, some things I don't always have those. But we'll be the most hard gate when we do it, that's why it will be coming out soon after. Um, distribute payments of loop tax payments to local fire districts through the town's annual budget process. The formula that Chief Driscoll just went through, I would use with the latest data from latest mill rates and the latest data from the assessor. What right in form of. Uh, if more getting during the process, it potentially during the process. Um, then. L C two is nothing, this policy shall prohibit the town council or representative town meeting from making changes to the expenditure. As of the right. And then the appendix actually gives this formula. Um, the spreadsheet that we're reviewing. Yeah, just as an example of how it works, so people can understand how that formula works. And then the page actors, a few more specific definitions to that spreadsheet. Whereas earlier wasn't a little more broad. The appendix B is the town pilot fire district formula, basically it looks at the. Percentage area. Yeah. And for the the one twenty five, the one twenty five is intended to be a little town prop for town property. Uh, it's just something we give, it's not based on anything in particular. Um, and so what would happen now with this formula is it'd be based on percentage of town property in each district, so. Um, right now it's still set at one point five, that could be changed in the future. Um, at any time, you would still continue to use whatever like current percentages of the town property of us just. If anything new happens. They do, they'll even just. Even current.
Just so I know the the area percentages on this. Eight point six you picked up, all those. Just one word. Little play.
Correct. And. When we were talking about this, our twenty five thousand. I mean, this sounds insulting, but it's a low, it's a small number, and if we broke it down, if we get into the state. On could wipe that one out. Fairness.
The timing is you develop.
Yeah, we started, well, we started in October, we start at C I P, but the real budget. Uh, it starts around December, we start collecting. Um, so we would start doing some initial, or January is really where. Very good. Um, January is probably when we would talk to just. But we're, but it doesn't have to be the town council. The march.
Does it say that? Like you're going to use the numbers app.
Well, this is the latest numbers.
Like.
We're saying, well, whenever we start, whether it's January or whatever we have. Uh, we do the budget, normal budget process for Carter.
They use the value as. We're, she does. We're gonna be assessing.
We'll use the correct, we're the correct. Right.
Perfect. So it's just.
Right there, that's in that policy number one. The. The third page, third page, uh, where it's the policy, the town manager shall use enclosed formulas. Maybe change it to using. Assess values as of January first of. The. Our budget year.
Or.
Yeah. Oh, we can find it, it's around.
Yeah.
Our, our number rate is seven. Third name.
We'll, we'll use the last, we'll list it down.
Yes, that's values for.
Yes.
As of like. Right, the current year.
I want to talk to.
How about as a blank?
Yeah.
And we could fill that in. Everything.
And the latest about did, um, welcome part for it.
Yeah. I think it's for reversing.
And, you know, and and we have to, you know, we'd have to do it by. Like early February, like this, so. Yeah, so, you know, all I can guarantee is the day of the first. That would allow. Yeah. I'll remember it though, all. Let's just put that in.
It says current.
Right. The, the, okay, so the town manager shall use a post formula including sets values. Of as of January first of the. Right. That what we want to say. Um, we, we won't.
Every time you do the formula, it's just.
Yeah. Doesn't make it clear that we don't, I wouldn't put this into January, but this is. I didn't suffer. It was, you know, could track to earlier, but. As of.
Just eight things to that and do it consistently every year. Because accountants usually like to.
We'll just, let's just keep it January first. Um, the time I just shall use a close formula is uh, putting. Uh, assess values as of January first. Where do I go with that? January. Their first of the current year.
Right here. And if I was to create as a January first. Thing, right now.
Right. I think, oh, we could, yeah, we could just use that first of all, because it's not going to change.
Right.
Right.
Right, just, just say that's what you're looking for, as of January first.
Putting information available as of January first.
We have that.
Right, but they'll still be existing.
Ours will be.
How you're talking fiscal year? Say. Our fiscal year.
Yes, it would be the current fiscal year. Okay, then we'd be right in the middle of it, still. Probably, oh.
Just a couple comments, I think the policy is very well written. I just think we need to remind. A spreadsheet or with. What I mean by that is. Maybe list priority number one, because I like how John did. Party one, two, three, maybe we should list readers to see mutually payments. Fifty percent possible. You have priority three, but there's two pieces of priority three here. I'm not sure if you want to make. Party three and four or. Be in A or, you know. Because priority three is the area percentage. Possibly spreadsheet we have. F may hold a hundred percent plus and D may call. Much your. Break down into two priorities and then we want to switch. Priority. H may hold is five. I is four, so we want to. Switch those on the spreadsheet.
What did I say again, please?
Uh. F and G are.
All right, oh, they'll be three and four.
Three and four, right, and then H is right now your number five priority. And I is the number four. We either need to change the spreadsheet to. Or. Means the policies are right.
Again, just to reiterate that policy one, let me show you. Our manager shall use as close formulas using assessed values and local fire district mill rates. Um, as of January first of our fiscal year. Um. To distribute payments of load tax payments, access payments to the local fire districts through the town's annual budget. Excellent. I'll also learn by Harry love. Yeah.
And then on the spreadsheet. A, at the end of A, we'll need to put it. You know.
Well, it goes so far back, though, I don't want to. I don't know if you want to include that line.
Maybe just take.
Go back quite a long ways.
The only thing I like about that line is. Some, a reader could say, why are we moving fifty? But there's.
I would have to do calculations every year.
Or what if he did that?
Yeah, you have to find the books for every year.
There was one page that said. From nineteen eighty to second.
What was that?
Started at fifty.
Yeah.
Was like eighty down this. Sixteen, I mean, it's safe sixteen eighty. Ask those hours.
I have, I don't want to go into.
I have it, I can, I can email out all back to you.
I just think it's important because.
Right, yeah, that's range.
When it says historically open years.
Just go on and look at more past allegations.
That was the one before.
Did it start?
Nineteen eighty. Let's go nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety two.
Basically, they will last twenty four years. Twenty four years.
And for this, you're. No upcoming year. I guess we're in the new year now, aren't we?
Also, it doesn't make. Confession that reason. And so.
Look, like you said, it only started at fifty fifty split, it's that has a mother. Growing. With reads a little bit. And there was one year. Oh. I'm starting to keep that down.
Actually, also.
It would be the.
Yes.
What is the number sixteen eighty? I was just.
Fifteen, sixteen. It went down to seventeen one percent in nineteen eighty eight.
Sixty one. I. Why would I?
Yeah.
You want is what I.
Any year before that, it was very sad.
Yeah.
That's the one.
No other comment I have, I ain't prepared. Like a little movie that should be here. This is pretty detailed. All right, and it's hard just. I think to understand it just for me. We're working a little bit.
I think what you want to say is then we'll be at every. How much plan? For the next one again.
But I think it's, I think it's great spelled out, but it's a lot of it's. We're got some. Little bit more.
It's. I have no problem doing anything without.
I think it's really the. Her part. My opinion. Other ones are pretty. Maybe just my. Rest is.
I'll try to take a read to it too, is. Fresh meal and try to start from the.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, yeah.
Understand. Oh, that.
It also gives like an explanation here. Well. Yes, maybe even. Party is you take. Right up in here. Up here and add.
Who has, who has the message?
Yeah.
We can label this. We are total.
You know, the, you know, over to right, it's all is at the bottom.
Well, I was saying, listen, call the way and see this, this is our.
I think it's. I did. In that mission. Is. The fire district, I'll be worried more than five lots of thousand. That helps. Name that area. That last thing. On party three, yeah. Mine, the way that I go to definition of that was thirty percent of one hundred percent loss. Once from the town is that already one. I've interviewed. Area percents in the state owned properties in the fire district of all the state owned properties in the nonprofit. Hundred percent loss is usually thirty percent greater than the revised loss in the fire district, the fire district whole. So fire district will be awarded more than their revised loss plus thousand dollars for. Basically saying that. There you can't, you can't.
I like it, look, can we, can we step back and just? Think when you said, I think. It's unbalance, you should have a policy. Sure, but if you go to the spreadsheet, I don't, it's not formally the search. After. After, if mutually payments. Party number one is forty, that number should then be, should be a subtotal of six. Forty one thousand.
Right.
That's how you cut it. We don't have that in the spread, reader could see, you know, six hundred forty one thousand pounds. Is that's what you're saying, once from the balance after. That, that six forty one is number. Your number, right?
Yep.
And the area, area status.
We need to have that spelled out on the spreadsheet, that, that's the spreadsheet that's. Alright.
On three with with letter.
Well, I'm going to the green box.
Okay.
Your spreadsheet that has your, that has your pounds. Or not.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm confused that this party three doesn't follow. This green. You know, like F is. F is what you're saying is party three, correct? Make whole hundred percent.
Right.
But it's actually. The second part.
Right, so, yeah, so we'll give it. If, if my, if you were to take and say, okay. Um. And let's say at least that was the name. Their percentage of state owned property would, would make it so that they would exceed. The twelve hundred eighty six dollars they're actually due. That it stops at that number to make it so that they make the twelve hundred eighty six dollars. But instead of using their percentage, you just say you stop at a whole. Doesn't exceed it. You, if we go to on a grid. We're still way under what it would need for us to be able to.
You're basically saying. Line it up. So maximum is notated online.
Correct.
That's what.
I would do this if he does.
Yep.
So if you're on F.
Yep, on F.
It says make whole. Maximum. The. And go overseas. So. Just see up here. Your maximum that you can get from taxes is right there.
Revenue loss.
And you have any loss.
Yep.
So if. Is C. I guess it's been like. I guess it's been like E minus C. Right? You have balance and then over that. So if you have a negative. If you're.
You're saying, right, if you look at your, if you look at P V F P, for 1,540,000 oh, the, the line F is N A. However, if you look at Mystic, their total loss is 2,025. So they're getting the thousand, $1,012. That makes them whole, the stocks right there. But you use the percentage of state owned property for on a bridge. It is 72.77% for a total of 58,000. And you'll see Mystic is N A. If they made. You know what I'm saying?
It makes sense when you're explaining, I'm just wondering.
And we write the formula next. What is, so what is the formula of that? Data, what, what line?
F is two times E, isn't it? F is E, is F equals 50%, which is. So, pardon number two is everybody's getting 50%. Priority number three. You're going to get 50%. If if there's, if there's enough money, right, that's.
That's why we want, I, that's why I was trying, when you guys originally started, you wanted to do, you wanted to give more money to buildings versus woods, and we're trying to figure out a point system. So that's why we started with 50% of the assessed value across the board. The assessed value, they're going to take in, in place for buildings on the property.
Which is what Mary stopped with.
But that's why we started at that 50% mark. And when we're right across the board with that.
So we just type it there. So priority two is E. That's the 50% loss of payment. 50% assessed value. Correct?
Yeah.
So let's go to the next line, so F. The whole 100%. Is now priority three. How do you do the formula?
Oh. That was if if you use the area, you use area percent for everyone except the maximum amount is the make whole amount. So for Mystic, once they reach $1,012, that's it, they stop there regardless of their area. They've been made, they, they made their entire pack program of addition. They own property. Whereas if you were to do area percent, they would profit. You didn't give addition, profit. You made more than three.
That makes sense. There's one, yeah, another road bend here. How did that, 1,000? I mean, I should say, no, I'll keep, like, what's the conflict between why they're getting one? The other two aren't getting the free.
Because then they get it, because then they use the percentage of state owned property. And it gives them a higher, which will give them a higher amount. They, they give them money left over, have everyone else spending.
Why F and G are basic.
50% you gave to.
So S is broken into two.
50% of everyone's loss is paid under fire. So everyone has a loss that, that is, which is the asset, oh, she did that is the assessed value is their loss. But 50% cost of worth of every.
The other 50% went to free debt, would never be paid.
Part of that, part of the remaining now goes, so you have balance flipped over. Now it's a matter of, okay, so how do you, how do you take the percentage? And, and we were using percentage, but when you use percentage, there's going to be a point where already made them halfway whole percentage. Over what their actual loss.
I think we're all in agreement. Right.
So let me just get that. So I.
Well, now.
Let me, I'm just putting it so I can match that. So four is I. And then this split. And then F and G are both priority three.
Yes.
So basically.
And it's split into two different lines. And that's why it'll say like, as an A. It's actually down for.
Yes.
F and G.
You, you could have maybe worded that of state, state owned property, after that revised revenue loss.
Not as an Excel guru or anything, or our. Max. Make a fight reference. E, that it can't go oversee. And then it can all be on one line. Do you see what I'm saying? But you're an accountant. So I'm just saying, if I could condense into one line, the max formula in there, I mean.
It is, it is.
So we did, yeah, so I think if you just do it that way, percentage of state owned property not to exceed the revised revenue loss. That way, it's, it's almost right there.
It'll be E and F's not to exceed. There's the chart. E plus F. Not. You. E. Got it, John?
Oh, watch, I know.
You guys have gotten it, right?
Is there a question? We now receive more or less. I'm going to receive less than your issues.
On this data, but then when you add in the town. Because we're not messing with. And so it's asked, on the bottom here, A, you buy as you are written. Are these supposed to be index? And it's A just like, and with descriptions, or is this, but that's the way that some of these are written. I like this amount was increased from 1,000 to 2,000. Excuse me, I wrote D. I think that's a comment that was, that would be made for the council. And not so much for.
Yeah, this was just, just putting things in there.
Yeah. That's, I just think that maybe we should make this more policy driven then. Or we could leave it in there and just give it to the council and then.
Good. And we spent a little time on all that very read also.
Take it first.
Yeah. Certainly want to correspond better.
Yeah. No, one of these games.
Yes, yours, I guess we'll use this.
I mean, like, media.
And good, and time.
It might be a little trust for this. Maybe the second.
I just ask, so on here, where it's like, better A, where is this?
This far.
Yeah, where A is like the percentage. At town of Ron, I have a question, do you need? That would be better. Right here on the formula, right here, I would talk, it's 50%, that's A. And is that?
This, this didn't relate to it, so this ain't.
Right, but I'm thinking, have to make this matching. So when you're, I'll see, and then you it as you. So where does it explain a part about pilot launch, when you say that work of funding? Fire district, mine, to, no bunch of.
There's this.
What did you want? Or second?
Fire, I have this person.
Okay.
On the fire district payment, look at. The owned item properties. There was state and tax filing. Back to that line, 4553, that's in the town.
So that's under funding to be A, right?
Right. I think what you're saying, you're reading. This A and A.
No, you can leave it, because any did match this.
Right.
So that's what you do, I'm trying to match. Here.
We'll go with the note that, that A on spread.
Right, I was trying to, yeah, so I'm just trying to get this to match this. And that even maybe after with the description difference, we wish, I just so that you can reference it very easily back. And then it would be more clear.
Yeah, it works on that.
Yes, you don't have to. You get where I'm.
First, so it's like pilot mine. And I can do, that's from the town, but that's where it's from. Mine, 4553.
Which is essentially the governor's proposal budget for. I look. Yeah. Oh, two before you.
Yeah, I just want to make it so very clear that you see this. Lay it back to this and start reading. And figure it out.
Right. Yeah. It will be done. But these are. Great, but not. Have it easy to understand.
Well, thank you all for working on that.
Thank you.
Remember, I have a different C F, why don't you?
All right, any other questions?
We have your number. I'm in for nothing.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and I make our motion to.
All right, a second, there. There's 2066. We'll meet.